This conference will now be recorded.
How we are recording. So this is the, this is the view of the alley. I was trying to take one to the north and my camera messed up, but it looks basically the same. It's not much of an alley, but again, we gotta leave it open. And I mean, you can visibly see why we need to keep it open from the electric poles that are along there. So this is a, this is a portion of the sleep plat. And this is those that have been vacated previously by the railroad at some point. This little yellow area is, is the area we're talking about. The street names is what the streets would have originally been called. Obviously they've been changed. Cause Washington and Jefferson do not line up with today's Washington and Jefferson by a long shot. So that would have been really confusing. And also the avenues are, used to have tree names, which are duplicates today too. So again, here is the area. That would be vacated just, just Taylor Avenue, not the alley and not into this intersection at all. And at this point, staff recommends approval of that request.
Is that business at 701 to the west side there?
This?
Yeah.
Yeah, that said business. I think that's John Poole owns that property. I don't know exactly all that goes on there, but it's like a trucking warehouse. And he has access from the north. So yeah, can't move that map, but I can move this one.
I guess some neighbors right here, what did they say?
So far, none of the neighbors have any issues with it. The house to the north of us, there's an empty lot where a house used to be. And it's a rental property now. And so they have people coming and going from there all the time. The one directly south of us, of the house have been there for years. They don't have any issues with it. And the house catty corner to the northeast. He got a letter in the mail and he asked what we were doing. I just told him that the plan was to extend our property so that we could eventually tear down the existing house of it. Either a metal home or a double way.
The existing house at 1401? Yeah, true, okay.
Also not really a street anymore, or whatever it was a hundred years ago. It's mostly a yard.
Yeah, we mow it all the time. We mow Clarober to the north side.
So that was my question. And that orange square, you're currently mowing the entire thing? So if we do this split, you get half? Is that what I understand?
Yeah.
And we still mow Clarober because we don't want it to be overgrown.
Yeah, that was my question. If, if it's now owned by 1321, it's a rental house. I would guess based on being a rental house, they don't want more yard to mow.
No, they're not real good about mowing to start with. So we mow Clarober to the side of the street.
That's just the, the legal way that the county will handle it when, when the vacation's filed. I suppose at any point she could go to him and negotiate getting that property over to her if she needed it. But that's, that's how it stands right now. We would have to hear directly from that property owner that they want.
That they do not want it. Yeah, that's, that was gonna be my question. If we hand it to 1321 and they don't want it and then they just let it go. Cause it's not yours and they don't care about it, then it's.
I'm assuming the landowner got a letter, right?
Mm-hmm.
So.
Yep. And I didn't hear, in fact, really the only people I heard from was that 1326 that you mentioned a minute ago. And that was just a clarification question, just to see what was going on there.
So will it be? Become a part of 1321 and 1401 or it will be two separate lots? It'll become two more separate?
Yeah, I think, I don't know exactly how the county handles it, but I think they essentially just combine it.
With the, so like 1401 would get a half of it.
Yeah.
So if by chance she wanted to buy the other half of the orange square, it would already, it would have to be sectioned off from 1321 at that point.
Yeah. Which is a pretty minor thing for, for the city anyways. It's not a big deal for us.
So that's an area of land that's not claimed. The city doesn't own it or they do?
Technically the city does own it today.
The city owns it, but they don't maintain it. So they're supposed to have been doing that. And otherwise residents have been taking care of it, using their own resources.
That's a fair.
And kind of, kind of like squatters rights, since she's, her family have been taking care of the property. And the city's been not taking care of it. She's just proposed that since she's taken care of it, then she might as well take ownership.
This just, this makes that legal, this process.
This group concurring with this?
Eventually it will have to go, the city commission has to affirm this decision, but. That will be the next step if this body approves it.
And you haven't heard from the other landowner on the north side?
That's correct. Haven't had any contact.
And it would be granted to the requesting party or would they have to purchase it?
That, what that, the way the vacation works is it just is automatic when the ordinance that the city commission passes is filed. That takes automatically at that point.
It happens, well, what happens?
There's a vacation where it actually reverses to that. It's just like a, it's like a deed.
What about land survey? It ought to be resurfaced.
It, it really doesn't. We've got a legal description and she provided a, a survey that shows what land she's talking about, so.
It will aid logging 40 feet to the north of the existing property, which is 50 by 132.
Yep.
So to make it an 90 by 132 watt.
So by protocol, the most that this family can acquire is up to the center of Taylor Avenue. And if the adjacent property at 1321 don't want to have anything to do with it, then there's the option of them taking that portion as well?
That, that's between the two landowners.
Okay. Thank you.
I make a motion to approve the vacation of the property in.
Have a second.
Okay, we'll do this by rule call, the vote. Lloyd Colston.
Here and yes.
Brandon Jellins.
Here, yes.
Ian Coon.
Here, yes.
Kyle Lewis.
Here, yes.
Cody Richardson.
Yes.
And Tom Wheatley.
Yes.
So yeah, the next step will be to go to the city commission and I'll be in contact with you when. Probably coming up here pretty quick, next several weeks.
Item two, we're taking away Lloyd.
Okay. Commissioners, we're here to discuss amateur radio tower, not antennas. Because the antenna may not necessarily fall into the catchment. But certainly the tower height would be. There are a number of problems in the city with the existing towers. Some of which, the tower height currently is 35 feet. As I've driven around the city, I've noted that there are towers already existing over 35 feet at residences. And of those residences, some of the towers are in a serious disrepair, state of disrepair. That's not something we can address immediately tonight. But PRB1 and the Kansas version of PRB1 states that citizens or citizens who are amateur radio operators are afforded reasonable accommodation for a tower that exceeds the code issue now. 35 feet is the most that an amateur radio operator can put up without a variance or without getting a building permit. And having that building permit, I don't know that the city would be obligated to, to issue a building permit for a tower over 35 feet. So we're going to discuss that tonight. I brought some material from the American Radio Relay League. Just so you'll know, I'm the former section manager of the Oklahoma section and former public information coordinator for the Oklahoma section. And I speak with some level of knowledge about the topic of amateur radio. I also brought the new antenna zoning book for the radio amateur. That book, thanks to the generosity of the Ark City Public Library, is in the collection when I get back to the library tonight. So if hams want to check it out, there's a resource.
I knew you were gonna plug that library, go ahead.
Up there it says corporate of Ark City. The league, the American Radio Relay League, has a number of benefits for members to help us put up a tower which doesn't require God and gravity to stay in place. One is the volunteer consulting program. And there are consultants that are league members on registry that through the technical information service can be used as a resource. So the amateur can get their catalog and pick up a tower and have someone help them. Or even there are some groups that will build, build and erect the tower for you. The towers that are sold to amateur radio operators come with instructions to tell you how much concrete and how deep the concrete and guy and the lack of that. The second avenue is the, there's an amateur radio antenna law list populated by folks like Fred Hoopengardner, the publisher, the editor of that book and other hams who are attorneys. Oh, by the way, this is Be Kind to Attorneys Day and we will be having one on the line. So be kind to our attorney. The other is the volunteer council program from the American Radio Relay League. And the volunteer council that has joined us tonight is Rod Richardson, WJ0HHX. Rod, have you got a few words to say to us?
It's a pleasure to be here. I hope you can hear me okay, but yeah, I think it's, it's, it's absolutely wonderful to see planning commissions engage in the discussion of this with the amateur radio community. I can tell you that I practice law. I'm basically a zoning land use lawyer and sat on planning commission here in Johnson County for 22 or three years. So I, I feel like I'm sort of on both sides of the table here. But I've been a ham radio operator since 1963. So I think this would be my 60th year because I started when I was 13 years old. So I've been doing the hobby longer than I practiced law and was privileged to be one of the guys that worked the Kansas legislation through with a couple of Kansas legislators that were most helpful to, to get the Kansas version of PRB1 through. They're both basically the same. So I retired from the active practice of law a few years ago, but still keep my license active. As I tell my wife, just in case I get an offer I can't refuse. But I'm retired, but I've been a volunteer council for ARRL for decades. So every now and then amateur will have a question, legal question, or something comes up along the lines of what you're doing this evening. And I'm always delighted to be able to, to help. So I know that you've got a lot of things to discuss, probably have a lot of questions. I've been through. Things up here in, in northeast Kansas. I'm, I'm in southern Johnson County. You know, it's always, it's always an opportunity to explain what the amateur radio operating system is, how it is part of the federal communications act that goes back into the 1930s that designated the amateur radio service as a national resource for emergency communications under circumstances where emergency communications are necessary. So one thing I've learned over the years of doing this is you don't want to over explain this stuff or, or bore everybody to death. I do think it's important that cities across Kansas provide reasonable accommodation for amateur radio operators. Because that's what the federal rules say and the Kansas says. How you do that is the subject of why you have discussions like this. What's reasonable for your particular community and what's reasonable for the amateur radio operators. So I'll step back and I'll be glad to, to participate to any degree you want. Share my thoughts if you want them and be happy to answer any questions. Hopefully when you get to the end of all of the discussion and the back and forth, at some point you'll be able to consider adopting some amendments to your regulations. I know you have in your packet suggested revisions, which some, I think some of you have certainly looked at. And it's a good place to start. That's fairly representative of what I see around the state of Kansas and other cities and up here where I am. So it's a pleasure to be here. That's, I'll step back and be here if you need me.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. And I'm glad that you are here because I'm not an attorney. We also have Ron Upton, WB0WSI, who is a local amateur radio club. There are, as I last counted, 97 active amateur radio operators in the city, in the city, not the county. And volunteer to represent a portion of those 97.
All right, my name's Ron Upton. As I said, I'm WB0WSI, I'm licensed with the FCC underneath that call. Unlike Rob, I've only been one for about 45, 46 years along the line. So what I'm, little background on myself, okay. I'm associated with the Colli County Amateur Radio Club, which are the ham operators from the county, Winfield majority and Ark City. We have some that are active and some that are just ham radio operators that are not active on a daily basis or in our club. And so we, we work with them all the time. The club owns three repeaters. A repeater is a device that basically from the little handhelds like he has there, we can key it and it'll pick up the signal and in our county it rebroadcasts it out at 60 watts. So we're able to communicate any place within the county. Because of the repeaters, repeater, one of them is at 185 feet. Another one is at 200 feet and our one out here that's west of the city out here is about 100 feet. So those are the three that we have. Now, those three we share with Colli County amateur amateurs and also with Colli County Emergency Management. Okay. To give you a breakdown of myself, I'm a volunteer with the Colli County Emergency Management. I am also with the Radio Amateur Civil Emergency Service. I'm also with CERT, which is a communications, community emergency response team in accordance to disasters. So there's some other things. I hold 22 different certificates from the F, from FEMA on study and different things and running through them. Not only do I want to talk about amateur radio, I want to talk about towers in general that are going to talk about or be about. Even the civilian, I'll call them that, high definition TV antennas that they're wanting to put up. One of the problems that we have in this area is for instance, trees. Most of the trees in this town run in the height, probably what 60, 50, 60 feet high. And yet our antenna, the tower you're telling us is at 35 foot. Trees have a, an effect on the signals that we receive and send. And anytime we get a little bit of moisture on those or the wind blows, which we have on a daily basis. It also interferes with our signal in there on that. One of the things I, I had in here, but I hope everybody got a copy of the packet I submitted to them. I'm not sure whether.
Oh, the, yeah.
Yeah, I submitted a packet of information of everything and they're on it. But that's one of the things that we run into around town is, is, is my antenna is sitting at about 30 feet at my house. And I have trouble contacting Wichita, which is what 40 miles away from here with a very large gain of 60 watt power being put into my antenna. Okay. And that's because I have trees that are probably 20 to 30 feet higher than what I am right now. Now, we talked about PRB1. And for, if, if you did have a chance, that was put out by the FC3 FCC and runs through things. Fred Hoopengardner is the one who published this book and talks about that in there. And that was in the agenda I gave it. There was one in there on antenna heights and, and then another one on the model org instances. Okay, the restrictions on the tower has a great effect on amateur radio operators. Now technically PRB1 says you have to accommodate amateur radio operators. Otherwise, if they come in for a waiver from you guys, you know, that's what they're coming to be doing, to put up a tower. Now Lloyd mentioned it and I'll go through it again. Every tower manufacturer has specification type of items. Okay. And they look similar. Items like this, okay. Not only does the FCC tell us how we have to erect towers and manage them, so do the manufacturers. They go as far as telling us in some of these things here, how big of a lot or an area we need in order to erect a tower. So we just can't go out and erect a tower that is going to be 100 foot tall. Because we're limited by that. Okay. So we have those restrictions already for us. And it's, it's something that we have to abide by. We don't have any option in that as an amateur radio operator. So if our lot or our area would be able to accommodate a 100 footer.
Can I stop for one second?
Sure.
I, I'm confused. What are we supposed to be even discussing? I mean, what do you?
Tower, I'm talking about towers right now.
Yeah, I understand. You're wanting to know, you want to go higher with them? What, what do you?
What's your request?
What's your request?
My opinion, I would like you to drop all restrictions on height of a tower. Because two, one, number one, amateur radio operators, tower height and everything else controlled under the FCC. Okay. It overrides basically everything.
So do you know why?
Can't get too high. Yeah, well, the FAA, it has a restriction, but that falls into the amateur radio.
Do you know why the city has a limit on the heights?
It's not necessarily that we have a limit to the height of towers. What, what the issue is, is that we have height limits in the residential district. And that's the 35 feet. The only way today, let's say Mr. Upton wanted to put a 100 foot tower up on his property, he would have to get a variance from the Board of Zoning Appeals, which isn't the end of the world. But the problem is with that, and this is what Lloyd and I have kind of discussed, is if it came to the Board of Zoning Appeals, they wouldn't, you wouldn't even know what you were looking at. The technical reasons for allowing a tower. And so part of what we, what I did in the packet was I borrowed some from Mr. Richardson, who spoke earlier. Sent me kind of a draft of an ordinance. And I put it in the packet that kind of shows what it might look like if we were to adopt that. Certainly the language could change. But what that did is it gives you the technical reasons for allowing the height difference. And what it would allow is if, it would, it would change it to where it's a higher height. And if it was over a certain height, then, then you would still have to get some sort of a conditional use permit or something along those lines.
So what Lloyd is requesting is that ham operators, when they want to erect the tower, shouldn't have to go.
Unlike Mr. Upton, I would propose that we allow a pole for, and for a television antenna not to exceed 50 feet. That would be for the citizen because it's a life safety issue in my opinion. If we tell people have three ways to get warnings from your emergency management officials. If they are watching TV out of Wichita, I can't watch Wichita stations. I have to either have cable or have to stream. There are some people in your community commissioners that are too poor to have streaming or cable. So I would propose a 50 foot pole, not a tower pole, not to exceed 50 feet for that, for the resident.
So who's going to regulate that? I mean, who's in, I mean, you, you go to throw an antenna 50 feet. If I hire an electrician, they gotta be certified. Plumber certified, I mean, all the trades.
Yeah.
Who's going to be doing this?
I think you have to get a permit.
That would involve, in my opinion, to the homeowner to put it up and.
I, I disagree. I don't think a homeowner should go out there, throw a 50 foot pole up against this house. You know, I mean, what, what happens if that pole falls over, hits electric lines, takes down power to the whole lot?
And that's certainly a consideration.
You know.
But beyond that, for an amateur radio operator, you're, you're, I think somewhat obligated to give us reasonable accommodation. And a 50 foot pole I can put up. I've done it before.
I think as, as long as you get a permit from the city, it's regulated.
And the, the plans like that he showed earlier.
Yep.
Already being placed.
And if I wanted to put up a 125 foot tower on my property, then in my discussions with Josh, I would be required to have a building permit and city would have to come out and, and do an inspection. I'd have to present my plans. It has to meet a certain standard electrical code. And either I accommodate, either I do that or I hire done. And the contractor would have to meet those requirements. But as an amateur radio operator, I'm fully knowledgeable about having to build a tower.
I mean, there's a lot of people that are knowledgeable as far as to build also. You have to go through all these, I mean, I have licenses like you wouldn't believe just to build a house.
Right.
You know, so my reservation is you've got, you just said the poor of the poor can't afford streaming or right.
Right.
So they're gonna be out there trying to hang a pole in here 50 feet so they could get some television. I mean, how are you going to regulate that without getting a permit or something?
That's the discussion that we can have tonight.
Thanks.
So it would, as long as they get a building permit and the structure is sound and is not a detriment of public safety or health.
Mr. Richardson, do you have a comment about that?
Well, yeah, I, I would say in my experience, it's perfectly reasonable for anybody on the planning commission or the city governing body that would ultimately have to pass, ask some questions and those questions certainly include what you're. Ask some questions and those questions certainly include what you're talking about. How do we, how do we provide for the public safety connection with the erection of these? And it's not unreasonable to say, well, just how high can you put a tower up? You know, can you go 2,000 feet or you know, where is the limit? And I think it's important to. You know, and you ask, so I'll say this, it's important to recognize. That PRV one and in the Kansas legislation very wisely. Did not say you can have an unlimited height tower or they, and they didn't say you couldn't. They didn't address that issue. They just said you have to make reasonable accommodation for the amateur radio service. And I think the point, there are a couple of points been made. The amateur radio service entails operation on multiple frequencies. The very high frequencies are the VHF frequencies that were discussed a little bit ago about from Arc City to Wichita, let's say. That record, they're almost line of sight. So you have to have something that's up in the air to make that work effectively. And that might be the most significant for emergency communication to have a reasonable ability to, to, you know, have. So on the other hand, there's a whole range of frequencies that really, really mandate higher tower heights. In order to, to communicate over global distances. And you could say, well, you know, between here and Africa, how could that be a national emergency? Well, you know, amateurs communicate over vast distances for all sorts of emergency. Service or tornado service or hurricane service or service to ships at sea or whatever. So there's two reasons that amateurs like to get an antenna up in the air high enough to work properly. One's the emergency communication line of sight stuff for the high frequencies. The other one is, you know, the longer distance communication. So there's two issues to me that you have to really kind of think about. One is, you know, what's a reasonable height to give you as a matter of right? And over, over that height, maybe you have to come and get a variance or a special use for, probably just a variance. And that's been my experience across the state that where I've been involved in it is basically the governing body says, yeah, you're right. 35 feet certainly isn't going to do it. Most of the cities around here and you know, you can look it up yourself and your, your planning director can certainly call the planning directors of other cities. There are a lot of cities around here when this came up, had to be educated because they just had, you know, you couldn't put anything up or you, you, you know. But when PRV came out, we had to do the same thing that's being done here. It's like, let me, let's explain why this is a federally protected service. And then the next thing is how do we balance the interests of the citizens? Someone mentioned, you know, what if the thing falls over an electrical wire? You know, there's all kinds of issues about safety of installation and all that. So my comment would be this. I think you have to give the amateur radio operators. And I'll just say it, I think you have to give them a minimum, I mean, for a minimum of, you know. Absolute minimum of 60 feet. But realistically, the communications, if they've got room to put a tower up there 100 feet or. 20 feet. Then again, that's going to allow them to communicate much more effectively in the event of an emergency. But anything below.
Lloyd, you're saying that 50 feet is sufficient?
For, for the resident, for, not the ham, for the resident to put up a TV, a tower that was ordered TV antenna. That could receive Wichita or.
That would be for the HDTV. Over the air television. Don't you have three towers? No, we're talking something different. He's talking about people who are non amateur.
Let's stick to the ham radio.
Let me ask Mr. Richardson one question. What does Johnson County require for permitting right now?
Well, you're asking about the county as opposed to the 35 cities here. The county, right now, if you, if I wanted to put up a tower and I live in the county, not a city. Tower, I can have 60 feet as a matter of right, but if I want to go higher, I can. I'm limited a little bit because I'm within, within, you know, I know the exact list, but I'm not that far from Johnson County Executive Airport. So there are some airport limitations that override everything. But basically most anywhere in Johnson County, I can put up 60 foot tower. Without having to go through a lot of permitting or whatever. And usually they'll.
But you do have to go through some permitting?
Well, you have to go get a, if you're going to, obviously if you're going to put up a tower, most of these cities will say you have to have a building permit. But if you install it in accordance with the tower manufacturer's recommendations in terms of. How much concrete, how much rebar, et cetera, in the base and you, you install it according to their sealed. Engineering plans, which will come with a tower, let's say. You've got to, you've got to do that and as long as you do that, that's okay. What they don't make you do is go out and say, because we had this problem. Some of these cities said, well, it's nice that the tower manufactured by Texas Towers, let's say. Has a Texas engineer seal on it. We want a Kansas engineer seal on. Well, you can't get a Kansas engineer to seal somebody else's plans without violating all kinds of rules and regulations under Kansas law. So it basically made it impossible to get anything done in terms of using an outstate engineer, even though they're the manufacturer's engineer. They're perfectly okay. So everybody got around that and said, no, look, as long as you install it according to the tower manufacturer or the. Whatever you're putting up installation recommendations, we're okay with that. But you know, not, I'm guessing, you know, I know a lot of hams. I mean, good night, I mean, there are probably thousands upon thousands of hams up here. Not all that many. And I mean, they're using different modes of communication, whether it's digital or other. There's various ways of doing, but for the amateur that wants to engage in emergency communications, which is the point of the service. You've got to give them a reasonable accommodation. The point I'm making is what that reasonable accommodation is, isn't written down anywhere. Except that if you were to go or if your city attorney, whatever was to go look at the case law. Where there has been some argument in court about what the hell does reasonable accommodation mean? You're going to see everything where the courts have said, well, you know, it's, it's really up to the local communities to make that decision. Based upon what the amateur radio service is all about. And most of those will say anything from 60 to 120. You know, is, is, you know, within reason and they'll look at, you know, you've got enough land to put up a 100 foot tower, you know. Fine, but I think you, you've got to establish for the amateur radio service. If, you know, if, if you were to say, what do you think, what do I think's reasonable? You know, well, if you put an antenna up 60 feet. You know, somewhere in that vicinity, you get one up 60 feet, that's a long way. That's six stories in the air. You're going to be able to communicate pretty well on either the HF or VHF or UHF frequencies. I think that's, it would be difficult to show otherwise unless you were in a mountainous area or something like that. However, I will also say this. I, I can, I can communicate better, I can communicate a little bit better, a little bit further if I had it at 100 feet instead of 60 feet. You know, and so I think what you have to decide here is, all right, how do we, how do we decide what's, what's fair here? And that really involves, look, we need to talk about setbacks for guy wires. And we need to talk about what's the height that we're willing to say you can have as a matter of right if you're a licensed amateur radio operator. And that ought to be at least 60 feet, but you know, if you can, if you want it to be 100 or 120, I mean, you can set it. But it's got to be at least 60 feet. And beyond that, that's, there's not much more to it other than making sure that this only applies to amateur radio operators. If somebody else wants to put a 60 foot tower up, they got to come in and get a variance, I would guess.
How about this? For the sake of emergency, emergency management and in compliance with the federal laws. How about we, I propose that as the zoning board, we allow. A reasonable height of 60 foot for a radio antenna. Granted, it complies with the local building codes.
So he just gave you the plans to pour that concrete. Can you read that?
Which were a couple of questions.
Any of them, on the bottom left, that's how you're supposed to pour up here for a pad.
Okay. So will the city oversee that process?
You're going to have to, because I mean, that's, I can't, I can't as a builder, I can't even pour that. I have to have a concrete, I have to have Brian Wells come in and pour my concrete. So you have to be, I've taken all my tests over that, but I'm not a concrete guy. So to read those plans right there, an average citizen is not going to read those plans.
Even if they understand it, someone's got to make sure they do it.
Exactly. I mean, that's.
Right, that's where the building permit and the building official would be.
The city, the building permit would comply with all the structural regulations.
So what does a tower cost?
That's a public safety thing. They don't want the tower to fall over.
That's a given on, when you talk about putting up. An antenna, this is from the manufacturer that just gave you there. And the average amateur radio operator or whoever. Who has to put in a two by two or a three by two or a five by five. Block of concrete is going to have to have somebody come in that knows something about putting in the concrete. I mean, we're not going to be, you know, myself, I would not try to put in even a two by two block. Without having somebody know about the concrete I need. I don't know the difference between one type of concrete and another type.
Right.
And so I would be calling the, the people that know that to have them come in and lay a pen for it.
So I thought initially you wanted to bypass permitting. It's kind of your first.
No.
No.
But I'll tell you what happened to me several years ago when I called down to the city and talked to somebody. About it, they told me I didn't need a permit to put up my antenna.
What I'm trying to achieve here is the reasonable.
But that was with the current regulations of 35.
Go ahead, like 35 feet.
What I'm trying to achieve here is the reasonable accommodation for amateur radio towers. Moreover. If someone were to come and put up a tower, we have nothing in process right now to stop them. Not a thing stops them from putting up a tower, evidenced by the towers that I see already up.
Basically, the rules are being enforced.
Well, there's.
What about FCC compliances or FAA compliances?
FCC.
So, so kind of regulations with our.
Amateur radio operators are well governed by FCC rules that we have to live by on a daily basis. Okay, we have to take measurements from our radios to see whether they're radiating out far enough. That might cause harm or danger to other people. We have to have, go in, we've got a formula that we as an operator have to follow. In order to do that, see, and we have to have it at our shack.
So let's go back to, back to my proposal. The, the rest of the commissioning body is in agreement. Or we, we should vote on this, but I propose we allow reasonable accommodations. That are in compliance with the building, city building codes that are regulated as a matter of public health and safety. That we allow 60 foot ham radio antennas to be permitted. Construction for the base of the tower by the city.
Just by right? I mean, without any special approval for 60 foot?
Yes, other than.
Not to exceed 60 foot, after 6 foot, Americans.
Yes. Would you consider that reasonable as an AM operators?
Yeah, it would be better than what we have right now.
Okay, if you want to go over that, we can, you'd have to seek a variance, but at this point, you wouldn't have to go through this governing body or this, you know.
I would think that would be reasonable. But to address your concern about the citizen putting up a hole. They're already in danger at 35 feet because there's nothing stopping them and that tower pedal getting into the service line. So you have to be very cognizant and ham radio operators. There are four reasons why the FCC says that we exist. One is emergency communications. One is international goodwill. And the third, most important is that they are a trained resource for people. I can tell you right now who my ham radio operators are in Arc City and who lives within five miles of me. So I could go over to my neighbor and say, would you come over and help me put up my antenna? And we are all about doing that because we want our neighbors to succeed as well.
Yeah, I, I agree that there is a need for this type of communication. I mean, should the cell towers drop out or electricity goes out? It would be nice or this, it would be a necessity to have.
And the short answer is yes, I agree with your proposal. But as I mentioned in the declarations at the beginning of the meeting, I got going to vote on this because I'm a ham radio operator.
So you're reclusive yourself.
Sorry?
You're reclusive yourself from the vote.
Yeah, he's recusing himself.
I'm excusing myself.
If I may, I'm not part of this, just listening in. So right now there's a 35 foot limit. You're requesting that that be eliminated and raised up to 60. And then you're aware that somewhere in town, somebody has erected a dangerous antenna.
I'm not saying dangerous, I'm saying that it was, it exceeds the 35 foot limit that we have. And some of those that have been erected in, in history, probably when the art was built. Then they are dangerous in that they are unmaintained, they could fall.
Do you have a proposal on what to do with the dangerous ones or right now it's just?
I think that's a municipal matter.
Yeah, that's.
That's not part of this, this board.
I mean, it's kind of got to be part of it. We can't put a plan in, we're not going to have. So let me ask this.
I'm talking about regulation of existing.
Well, maybe not existing ones, but we have to have a plan where we erect a 60 foot one today. You mentioned the amount of land necessary. What does that mean? If it's a 100 foot tower, does it have to be 100 feet from a structure or what is that?
Now, basically it's, is.
I think it has to do with the guidelines.
The guidelines on, let me see if I've got a plot.
So if we allow a 60 foot tower today to 30 feet from my house.
Once you get above a certain height. Okay, guide wires have to start being put out. Okay, those guide wires have to be at a certain angle in order to support it. You may have.
If you enforce setbacks, even the guide wires have to fit within the property.
Within the property line. Okay, you cannot, I can't exceed my property line. When I put up a tower and I want to put in guides.
So let's say you put up this 60 foot tower and two years from now you move. Your new person moves in and is not an operator, the tower sits there.
The tower's going to go with me when I move.
Is there any regulation that the tower's there, they leave it?
Hams die all the time.
They don't care about it.
Hams die all the time. And those towers stay with the property until somebody, typically another ham comes along and says, opens on the door. Are you a ham radio operator? Saw your tower. No, I'm not a ham. Can you take care of that for me? And so we'll get a crew together and come take the tower down.
Yeah, most of the time, if we have a ham die, the wife or the kids of that ham radio operator put his equipment all up for sale. And a crew will come in and take down the towers and everything else.
I would just think there's kind of be some sort of regulation.
Yeah.
20 years from now, if nobody has done that, there's got to be something in place.
Yeah.
Your question goes to your point of observing rundown towers that are not being maintained. So that's what he's getting at.
If one wire breaks, who's going to?
Most of those we're talking, he's talking about and looking at are the old. The old poles stick up from TV antennas.
Yes.
They're not amateur radio antennas.
Right, they're not towers. They could be, but they aren't.
That's on the liability of the property owner. I mean, if you have an 80 foot cottonwood tree in your yard.
Same liability.
It's the same liability. So it'd be up to the property owner to maintain.
I have run down so many rabbit holes with Josh, have not. Because what are we going to do about? Cause what are we gonna do about towers that get put up? And then the guy ceases to have a license, and he still lives there, but he's not.
I would like to make a point on that if, when it's appropriate.
Go ahead, Mr. Richardson.
Solution to that problem is pretty easy, in that, um, at least under the regulations that I proposed, um, in this little draft discussion ordinance, if, in order to put up a, a sixty foot tower in the first place, you have to be a licensed amateur radio operator. So if, if Lloyd or someone that's a ham comes in and says, all right, I, I, I need a building permit for my tower, um, here's the manufacturer, and, and I'm gonna have XYZ, you know, this guy picks a hole and put it in in accordance with these plans. He gets a permit for it, presumably that would be inspected, and he puts the tower up, and he lives there four years, and then something happens. He is no longer licensed for some reason, or he dies, or whatever. The minute he's no longer a licensed amateur radio operator, that tower becomes essentially an illegal, non-conforming use because it no longer complies with your ordinance requirements that mandate that to have that tower there, you've got to be a licensed amateur radio operator. So, um, I think what, the comment is what I found too. If that happens, the estate, the wife, or whoever has the license, that tower down, and it's not gonna be an issue. But if, uh, if that tower is there, and, uh, there's no licensed amateur radio operator there, then just as a matter of law, it's an illegal, non-conforming use, which would mean the city would have authority to, uh, advise them that it has to be taken down. And, you know, your city attorney, whenever if it came to it, could take appropriate legal action required to be taken.
Mr. Richardson, um, so you have to be a licensed ham operator to erect a, a tower of this nature?
To, to, well, to have, uh, the, my impression of what you're saying is, if you wanted to limit external structures for non- amateur radio operators to whatever height, thirty five feet, fifty feet, whatever, for just someone that's not licensed, you could do that. It's just a matter of, 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 of normal structure limitations, like you'd limit the height of a house or whatever. But for amateur radio operators, uh, if they were to come in and say, I want to put up a sixty foot tower, and you've got a thirty five foot tower limitation or height limitation, now you've got a problem because they can't locate adequately, and that's not a reasonable accommodation. So if what you propose is to give amateur radio operators the right to have a sixty foot tower, then they've got to have, uh, uh, along with a building permit, they've got to show their amateur radio license issued by the FCC. So the city says, okay, you're licensed amateur, you've got the, you've got the tower plans, you've got the permit, go ahead and put it up, and, uh, and then you're done. Now, if you gave everybody sixty feet, and you, you know, you could say everybody in town could have a sixty foot tower, uh, in which case I guess you wouldn't necessarily need, need to have an amateur radio license, but my understanding was, uh, you wanted to probably provide other lower limits for just average folks that aren't amateur radio license people. Um, but if you have an amateur radio license, then you have.
So what, what law governs that you have to be a licensed?
As a matter of right, so you don't.
I think you sent me your question.
Well, you have the right, as, you can go either way. Yeah, you can, you could put a limit related to amateur radio operators on heights, structural heights in your community. There's whatever, whatever it may be, thirty five feet, thirty feet, whatever, or five feet above the top of the house.
But who, who enforces the law on being the licensed ham operator? Is that the responsibility of the city or the FCC?
The FCC is the only one that is, can issue the license. All I'm saying is, the way it's done up here, and the way I've seen it done is, if, if the amateur radio operator, the reasonable accommodation gives the ham radio operator a greater height than the normal citizen would have.
So part of, part of the conditions, so if, if somebody comes in and, and they put up a ham radio tower and they're not licensed, they're breaking the law?
That would be a non, that would be an illegal, non-conforming use, that's right, in my opinion.
How we write our regulation, it would be per our.
Well, according to him, it's enforced by the, it's by the FCC.
To get their radio license, they issue it, but we would say sixty foot if you're licensed by them.
Yeah, I understand.
Basically, the way this would work is, this is acting as an exception to the height. And so by requiring the ham license, for example, that is a condition that they have to meet in order to actually.
I'm just curious, because what if I put up a thirty foot ham tower? Am I still breaking the law?
No, because right now.
That's what he was stating, that you have to be a licensed ham operator to erect a ham radio tower.
But right now, code says thirty five feet is allowed for.
I know, but I'm not a licensed ham operator.
No, he was saying you just haven't the license in order to.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Operating.
Yeah, not to build a tower. We would, but that's.
We touched on volume, what if everyone, what's all this do again? Everyone wants, how many per city block? Or it's gonna scar the skyline and power turbines, and I have a room full of people complaining about it. How many can you share a tower with a repeater? Have so many per block?
I can put up a thirty foot tower, and this happened in one of my jurisdictions. I had a ham put up a thirty foot tower, buried it, built it just right, and at night, when the sun went down, he cranked it up to a hundred and twenty five feet, and no one knew about it except maybe his neighbors.
We can't stop people from breaking the law.
There's nothing.
Yeah.
I'd like.
It becomes a different issue.
I'd like to bring.
In other words, you're suggesting that we add certain conditions, like you have to be a radio.
You have to be a licensed amateur radio, licensed issue through the FCC.
To put up any size tower.
And.
To put up a tower larger than thirty five.
Okay, okay.
All right.
That's an FCC regulation.
Yes.
I don't, evidently, that's not true of you guys, no. This is PRB dash one, okay?
But basically, what you're telling us that PRB one says we need to give you reasonable, whatever. So reasonable accommodations is open to interpretation. I can have a reasonable.
That's why I'm asking you, state the policy, what is going to be reasonable for this board?
Well, it's already stated, thirty five feet. You know, I mean, that's what, thirty five feet, that's a long ways up there. So I guess I'm just struggling with the, because it seems like we can erect these buildings, but then there's a lot of, well, if this person passes away, then it's on the city. And it feels like we're going back to the city doing, well, now it's on you guys to get that pulled down. Now it's on you guys to make sure those guide wires aren't in the right places. I mean, it's just.
And that's one of the rabbit holes I went down with Josh, okay?
Yeah.
What about, what if we add like?
Just a minute, go ahead.
How much burden are we going to put on planning department? And I'm already mentioned this in my first paragraph, there's ninety seven hams in Arc City right now. I don't see Josh being burdened by more than five building permits in the next ten years. I don't see it as a burden. What, why I just showed you, past, I need my license back. What I just showed you was a license. I can show everybody has, when the FCC cuts paperwork, they get a thing bigger than that. And it sits in my wallet. If a highway patrol trooper in Oklahoma needs to see it, he can. And if a highway patrol trooper in any state needs to see it, he can. We even talked about insurance. Can I reasonably expect my insurance company to insure my hundred and twenty five foot tower? I reasonably can, because I called my insurance agent and said, well, the insurance company give me a, uh, document that says that this tower that I'm proposing is insured by them. And the answer I got was categorically yes, and there are some caveats that I'm not going to go into, but my insurance agent said, yes, uh, we can get a, we can get a document to you that says that this structure on your property is insured for casualty.
Yeah, and the information I had in the packet for, to Josh, had two deals from insurance companies where they say they are covered, yeah.
If it, if it would be of use to you, um, just, and again, uh, uh, you're, you know, planning director can validate what I'm saying here with a few phone calls, but in, in the Johnson County, Wyandotte County, Miami County area that I'm most familiar with, there are probably, uh, at least, I don't know, ten, fifteen thousand hams, maybe more. And, uh, in my extensive zoning practice here, and I probably appeared in front of every planning commission and, and every, at some time or another over the last forty nine years. And after PRB one and the Kansas statute were passed, they essentially, most of the cities, not every one of them, but most of the cities said, look, uh, we're, you know, look, we're gonna limit, um, normal height to, uh, not exceeding ten foot above the highest projection of the house, or thirty five feet, or whatever, whatever the case may be. Anything above that, you got to have a variance for. Except if you're an amateur radio operator, you can have sixty feet.
That sounds reasonable, so.
So is that in PRB one? I never heard that PRB one.
My point is that, to my knowledge, in all of the years since that was passed, and you've got all these hams, I'm not aware of a single instance in, in those counties where an amateur radio installation, I wouldn't never say it couldn't, but I'm not aware of any of those creating any necessity of any action on behalf of any planning staff or any city attorney to require towers to be taken down, or, uh, the thing falling on somebody or whatever. I, it just, you know, because they are ex, towers are extremely expensive, and nobody wants it to stay put more than the ham radio operator does, and nobody, it's right, he's living under it, so it's incredibly important. Plus, the ARRL and the, and the amateur radio community, uh, you know, are dedicated to, to public safety and welfare. That's the whole point of creating amateur radio licensing anyway. Uh, so, so there's a great concern of not unsafe. I mean, they're supposed to be there to make things safer, particularly in the event of an emergency. And as I said at the very beginning of this, she, there's a, and I've seen this because people that, if you're not familiar with this, it raises a lot of legitimate questions, but I think all you really are looking at here is, you know, put whatever limits on height you want to, but amateur radio operators ought to be without having to go through the hassle of a variance. And if, if they want to put up a tower and spend, you know, seven, eight, nine, ten thousand bucks to buy the tower and put it up and, and get a permit from you and have you inspected, that should be a pretty easy deal, um, for everybody. Now, having said that, I want to make sure that we, and I, I don't, I'm not familiar with how Arc City sets up with reference to homes associations, because we didn't discuss this, but I want to make this really clear. It, to the great pain of the amateur radio community, but it is a fact that if you happen to live in a homes association area where there are restrictive covenants that say you can't have any towers, or any antennas, or anything else, because those are contractual covenants between the, the guy that developed the subdivision and people that live there. So this will not suddenly allow somebody that lives in a restricted homes association to put up a sixty foot. This only affects areas that are under the direct jurisdiction of the city and not in a homes association. And that's a point that became very important up here because there are so many homes associations. And so I just want to make sure you're clear on that. I don't know to what degree that would make a difference in Arc City, but that's a point that was important to other planning commissions up here.
I just feel, go ahead.
Why don't we draft a proposal and we just vote on it at the next meeting? And I would like to maybe possibly include a grandfather clause to protect the future home buyer, where he's not going to be violating any laws despite moving into a house with a tower.
Well, this, the draft that I put in your packet, um, it has a clause in there that says, within a hundred and eighty days of the date the amateur radio operations have been discontinued, the antenna or support structure would have to be, uh, removed. So that, it shouldn't apply if, under these regulations, it shouldn't apply to the next property owner, because it shouldn't be there. It shouldn't.
What if the guy dies or something?
That's a different story.
It's easy to determine. Okay, I don't want to.
So there already is a proposal.
I don't, I don't want to burden the planning, but I don't think I am, because again, there's only ninety seven hams in the, in the city. Beyond that, I don't know that maybe two or three would even want to put up a hundred and twenty five foot tower on their property.
I agree, and I think to spend that kind of money, it's better to be upstairs. You're gonna take care of it, and it's gonna be something that you.
And it's simple, if someone comes in to apply for building permit, all Josh or his replacement on down twenty years from now has to do is send a tickler to look at the license, and he doesn't have to go get the guy's license, because all he has to do is look at the FCC database and can tell how many hams are, are in, and is this guy one of them?
I, I have a thing on that. If you're already getting a license and we're gonna, we're gonna issue a building permit for the tower, how, how good is your license board?
Ten years.
For ten years?
Yeah, it's not, it's not a night and day thing, and you have to really, really earn it.
There's a test involved.
There's a test.
A lot of stipulation, they don't.
Yes.
And I am a qualified instructor for amateur radio, and I'm teaching a class presently now.
And I'm an examiner.
With fourteen new people.
So if we do this and you have a building permit and it's like a conditional use thing, what's the, is it gonna be okay forever? We have to go in and make sure that, one, they, they didn't die and they kept their license up? Like, to me, if we're gonna do this, and this is coming from the licensing side of it, just have something every, along with the license, like, we have, the contractors have to renew their licenses every two years. And so send information out to.
All Josh has to do is look at the FCC database, maybe if he wants to do it every year, I don't care, or he has to look at it every, every ten years, I don't care. Just look at the FCC database and say, does this guy still live here? And, and what?
No, I understand, I understand that.
Yep.
Also, we can put that responsibility back on whoever wants to put these towers up.
Right.
That's what, that's where I'm coming from, on the licensing.
Like every year?
You could put in a, a, a note in there, when they put in for it, all of our licenses have an issue date and an expiration date.
Correct.
So if you wanted to put in the expiration date as the term of that, then when they renew their license, all they'd have to do is bring it in and show it to you. Because the only thing I need to do to renew my license is fill out the paperwork and send it to the FCC. And they automatically renew it for me.
The only thing that is gonna be a wrinkle in that is if I break some regulation and the FCC cancels my license, you're not gonna know that.
That's why I'm saying, if, if we, if we do something like this, then we need to have a form along with the permit that is issued, that we send out along with the licenses. Not necessarily you guys have a license.
Yep.
With the city, but send out a form to you guys and say, is this still current?
Update your information.
Updates your information. Because we could go and look it up on the internet all day long, but that responsibility needs to be on whoever wants it.
And I agree.
Send that information back.
That it's my tower, I need to have some ownership.
Right, that's where I'm.
We, we don't even have to have that in the regulations, so we could make that a, just a, that kind of a process.
That's just an administrative type of action to do.
So I guess, I have to file for variances, I've done it several times over the last few years, to do what I want to do. And that's a dual purpose, right, to make sure, you know, I can do what I want, and then it lets the, you know, the surrounding people know what I'm going to do also. I feel like we're trying to end around that, for some reason, to, let's. To, let's say you don't want a 60-foot pole right beside your house. If they had a variance, you'd be notified that, "Hey, your neighbor's gonna build a 60-foot pole. Are you cool with that?" I feel like we're kind of trying to end around, around that somehow.
I feel like, I feel like-
Could I make a point on that?
You're cutting in and out real bad.
All right, can I make a point on that? Am I, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
I think one of the reasons that PRB-1 was adopted by the FCC was to avoid exactly what you just suggested. And I have absolutely no concern, I, like you, I've had to, either for clients, whatever, go through the variance process or special use or rezoning and the notice of surrounding owners and the right of protest and all of it. So that's a perfectly legitimate point that you bring up. However, if, if you said, "In order to have an amateur radio, you've got to, you've got to file for a variance, notify people, and suddenly your neighbors object to having an amateur radio installation there, now you've run afoul of the, of the FCC federal regulate, or the federal PRB-1 and the state PRB-1 that basically says that amateur radio operators are entitled to reasonable accommodation." And when you look at the case law, what you see is, what they're really trying to avoid is having to jump through a lot of hoops in order for an amateur radio operator to put up a reasonable antenna system. So the problem that you've got is, you may, you, the amateur radio operator may make his neighbor unhappy by putting up a 60-foot tower, but that's just part of the deal that goes with the F, the federal FCC license. So if you, if you suddenly say, "Well, you've got to get a variance," that could entail objections, a planning commission recommending denial, a city recommending denial, all of a sudden now the guy can't operate and now the city's run afoul of PRB-1 and the FCC and the Kansas regulations and here we all go. So it's-
The thing about PRB-1 is, I would think that, you know, we're already allowing, the city regulations are already allowing 35 feet, which is reasonable to me, but I'm not a ham operator. So, I, I mean, if somebody doesn't want a 60-foot pole right beside their house, that's also reasonable. So if the PRB-1 was so adamant about that, it's weird that they didn't put any kind of wordage or verbiage in there saying, "Hey, it's gotta be within 10 feet of the nearest tree line" or 60 feet. They left all that out of the PRB-1, they left it to reasonable and which is open to interpretation. So I don't really feel like there's any way to go around-
It's reasonable to the point that we, as a community, can establish the reasonableness. That's what we are doing and I discussing is what's reasonable.
I, I'm looking at it from, I mean, there's a reason I live in town. I'm looking at it from the neighbor's standpoint.
Yep.
I've got, I've got a massive pole in my front yard and I despise the thing. It's one of those old, but I don't know how I'm gonna get it taken down. I mean, I'm gonna have to have the company come and take that stupid thing down. You know, it's an eyesore. So I have that in my front yard and I want it gone, but I'm too cheap to base it on it to take it down.
There's a ham on the planet that will take that down for you.
So, I think we go back to this reasonable thing.
It would be nice if the reasonable, you know, is reasonable communicating 10 miles or whatever. If it said you need it this high-
Is it reasonable to have access to emergency communications?
Mr. Upton pointed out that we have a repeater and I can use that repeater with this device up to the next ice storm that I've had much experience with. And ice storms take away power and it takes away antennas and it takes away-
I've got another appointment, I said, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Why don't we draft the proposal and we just vote on it next month? Is everyone okay with it?
And what you, we'll still have to have a public hearing too.
Yes.
That's actually not a bad idea. I can, I'll bring back this, take in this consideration, some of what you guys have said tonight. And next month, we'll basically have a more formalized discussion than what we've had tonight. This has been a pretty decent discussion. But then it'll be like, here's, here's what I, as staff, proposed that we adopt. And then if you agree with it, then we could set a public hearing and move on.
Is everyone okay with that? Thank you, Mr. Richardson, I appreciate your time.
Yes, thank you.
All right.
Do you want to add anything of what Teresa's talking about to the other?
Yeah, she's gonna be one that's gonna have to do with some of this.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Well, I'm just, we need to be on the same-
You're gonna be doing all the paperwork.
Yeah, like, we need to be on the same page, but, you know, like, the contractors will come in and have the roofing register. Well, you can look it up online, yeah, I can, but that's, that's not my responsibility, you know, like-
Yeah, you need to have the piece of paper that says, "I need you."
So, that's-
Burnt proof is all in-
And, and you could, if you need to, in there, when you do it and approve it for us, you can put a requirement in there, when your license is renewed, you need to give us notification. I mean, you know.
Or prove it once a year, like, whatever.
Whatever.
Our licenses are issued for 10 years.
Yeah, that's exactly what I was, not necessarily make up a license, you know, for them, but-
You just need a data, a database set up with the amateur radio operator's name and when his license expires.
That's, that's kind of what we're, more or less, for a second. And confirm he's still at that address.
Well, he, he better be or he better have changed it with the FCC because we're required to do that. We're required to keep our email address active and if not, they can suspend our license. We're required to keep our address updated in their database.
And your application on the building permit has to match the address on your license.
Yeah.
All right, thanks, gentlemen. Josh, was there any other items?
No, I would just say that this is part of a larger group of amendments that we're gonna be making just to match up with the comprehensive plan. So expect a lot more conversations like this over the next several meetings. Just these different topics.
Move it to the chairman.
Move with the car.
If any of you want to know more about amateur radio, please contact me or Lloyd and I'll be willing to get you into the amateur radio ranks.
I think I've got about, I've got about another 15 years.